Okay. Okay, I hope everybody's in. Okay, I am going to call this meeting to order and this meeting is being recorded. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during that agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens after identifying themselves will proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules of decorum are in effect at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when appropriate, including when statements are out of order, to lengthy breach personal privacy rights, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a trust business meeting conducted in a public forum. And we can see the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and just to let the community know, we actually, we have a Zoom meeting and we expanded our participants to 300 so we can handle 300 in the Zoom. We are also streaming it through YouTube. And I also just wanted the community to know that because the last meeting was so efficient and effective and we had 147 people attend and we cannot handle that in a library, that it just seemed to be more appropriate to actually run the meeting in this manner, especially given the, some of the agenda items that we have tonight. So I do plan on looking back to face-to-face meetings at some point, but you know, and we'll just make that call month to month depending on what we need to talk about and how many people participate. And it seemed to be most more convenient for a lot of people at home. So.
I would like to state that I know of several people that were unable to attend that meeting because they weren't able to get on and I think there are people who would like to attend that don't have the internet access appropriate to actually attend in a meaningful way or at least be able to listen and follow things appropriately. So in my opinion, I think they should be face-to-face and we can adjust where in the school, like maybe the gym where we could appropriately handle the people. I know the other school districts in the valley are still having face-to-face meetings. We've had committee meetings that have been face-to-face. And I, I don't feel like roadblocks to people being able to participate is appropriate.
Well, I would like to say, Justin, that there are no roadblocks. We actually have more participants when we do virtual meetings and that's why we're doing another virtual meeting. We've never had 147 people attend in person. And so it just, the meeting was very efficient, very effective. People were polite. They were respectful. Everybody was able to speak and everybody was able to be heard. And so.
But he was unable to get on and people's internets were always working perfectly?
I didn't hear because your internet wasn't working perfectly just then.
So that's my point exactly is there are people who were trying to attend who couldn't because of their internet weren't able to get on and that's just not appropriate. That's not allowing people their voice to be heard.
Well, unfortunately, Justin, the meeting time and place, there's a lot of people who can't attend for a variety of reasons. So we're never going to be able to have a format, time, or place where every single person will be able to participate. So with that, we will move on with the rest of the agenda. We need approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I would second that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Oh, go ahead. Did you have, was that Marilyn?
I wanted to ask if you could list everyone and then ask for their yea or nay. It might be easier, please.
So any discussion? All right, all those.
I do have a little bit of discussion in regards to agenda item A. That is an interesting agenda item. I don't think it's necessarily an appropriate agenda item. And I was as shocked as others to see that it was on this agenda, including those of the community. So I'd like some clarification on why that is there. And then before we finish that agenda item, I do have a statement to read in regards to it.
That agenda item was after discussion with a legal team from Montana School Board Association and conversing with our board chair that we need to discuss and take possible action. Exactly what it says of the board disclaiming and separating ourselves from the actions of an individual trustee. So, and you have been very clear, Justin, that you don't want any communication other than during an open meeting. So I I didn't think there was any way to even contact you about that.
Okay, that's interesting. Your statement is completely false that I said I didn't want any communication other than an open meeting. So. But yeah, if you want to play that game, that's fine.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor? I, and what did you say Serena about raising hands?
If you could list each board member and then they can say yea or nay.
All right, so Marilyn?
Aye.
Aye. All right, aye for me. Chad?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Okay. All right, approval of bills.
I have a question purely out of curiosity on the Flathead County Animal Shelter. What would you be doing with those guys?
That was a hat day donation. So on Fridays, the kids were allowed to wear hats with staff and they donated money for the hat. And then every time they do a hot day, the counselors pick what group they want to donate to that week. And then it was the animal shelter that week.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question just about like stamps and posters, the stamps.com. Is that individual stamps that we are purchasing in order to mail out letters and such from the school? Or do we have something set up with the postal service to have, just to standardize number that we use to cover all of those? Because we might want to look into that if we don't.
So stamps.com is one of those discounted rates. So you, if you were to go out and buy one stamp or a roll of stamps, whatever, it actually is more than through the stamps.com. So we do get a little bit of a break on that. There's a monthly subscription for that and then we can mail right from the school, whether it's a box, a package, no matter what size, we have scales. It's kind of comparable to like Pitney bows, but without the actual machine. I found that it's a money saver before. And so we were trying it this year to see if it worked this year for a money saver.
Right. I know some businesses have an account set up at the postal service where they get a break too. And then they have a number that they just write on their letters and then turn to send an outgoing mailbox to so we could discuss with them if there would be any compromise or if it would be more expensive or less expensive to go that route too. But I was just curious how we did it. Thanks.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve the bills for October. Or I guess it'd be September.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Marilyn? Marilyn? Okay, aye. Chad?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Okay. Now, moving on to correspondence, guests, public participation. Okay, as last time. So this, if you would like to speak on a non-agenda item, you could write your name in the chat box and all community members will get two minutes. And this has to be something that, like I said, is not on the agenda. And whatever you choose to talk about, you know, like I said, two minutes, you need to be respectful, civility, no attacking anybody, no name-calling, all of that. So. Doesn't look like we have anybody. Oh, I see one hand up. Oh, no. Is there a hand up? Oh. So Krista must.
Yeah, Krista's hand.
Okay, is there anybody else's hand up? Okay. So Krista, you are unmuted and you have two minutes.
Okay, thanks. My video is not on. I'm at the school getting a kid from football, but I wanted to start by requesting that the recording of the last Zoom board meeting be published on the West Valley page and that this meeting also be published and all future meetings be videotaped and published unedited on the West Valley page. It seems to be that the minutes don't accurately reflect exactly what happens during the meetings or reflect the videos and audios that I've taken from the meetings. They also have a very one-sided bias tendency stating things such as Mrs. Bowles was way out of line, which seems to be more of an opinion rather than actual accounts of what happened. Other items I would like to see on the agenda. The board meeting times change to later in the evening so the working-class community that it serves can actually be in attendance. I would also like on the agenda that the grading system be changed back to the traditional A, B, C, D, F system. The current AD, P, and P system doesn't adequately assist our children for high school or real life. AD is nearly unattainable and P is 70% and above to my understanding. Our children are doing just enough to get 70% or P because why try any harder when the grade doesn't reflect so? But as a freshman, it's back to the traditional system. It would be interesting to see where the West Valley kids fall in the category of success when they get in their freshman class. I also would like to see on the agenda, the parking lot. It needs attention for drop-ups in the morning. I've seen vehicles drive into the ditch to get around the line. I've seen logging trucks come flying through at 8:00 AM. And on average, I wait on farm-to-market road for 48 minutes daily and I get there about 10 to 8. I've got some ideas for changes if anyone is interested. Lastly, I want to express that I'm 100% against any COVID testing on school property or a clinic at West Valley School. I don't care how convenient it is to anyone. This is a public school system, not a public health center. There is an uncountable number of healthcare facilities that can test and schools should not be one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And then Gretchen, are you good? You were muted.
I'm good. I got muted by my own mistake.
Yes, that's okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we will move on to West Valley PTO report. I don't think they're here. West Valley Teacher Organization. Oh, wait, what is this? Wait, I missed, what's Teresa? Is Teresa of West Valley PTO, Cal?
Well, she might be, but it's Tessa. Tessa?
Oh, okay, here, let me just unmute this person. Teresa, were you, did you want to make public comment? Did I miss your hand?
Yes, that was public comment.
Okay, so sorry, I missed you. Go ahead. Serena, can you start the two minutes? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Teresa. I'm a parent and I would just like to say I would like to go back to face-to-face meetings. There, we need to be able to sit down in a room, listen to our board members, the teachers' union, everything. The, um, the internet service is so spotty. You guys are in and out all the time. And it's very hard to hear people. I would really like to go back and people can log on so you can still have it Zoom. People can log on and watch it if they want to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. West Valley Teachers Organization, Cal, are there any teachers that wanted to speak tonight?
Yes, I think Emily Black wanted to speak tonight.
Okay. There she is.
Hi. Hi. So I teach at West Valley. I am our sixth grade and seventh grade math teacher. And I really think that we're seeing a ton of benefits right now in the math department. We have lots of gains being made by the kids. And we just finished our beginning of the year star testing. And so we're able to kind of look at data now and really see what things kids are really strong and then what areas we need to work on. And it's definitely helping to guide all of our teaching and instruction. Thank you.
Did you want to talk about the math counts too?
That's item B.
Yeah, but you can talk about.
Oh, I can talk about that. Okay. I'm also starting our math counts competition. And so it's that time of year again for kids to play competition math. And I coach this. And so it's really exciting. It's a great opportunity for middle schoolers. So it's grade six, eight. And the kids come together and we do kind of outside-of-the-box math thinking. It's not stuff that is taught in the standard classroom. We build on a lot of pre-algebra skills and then we kind of grow from there. And then we get to play at FBCC once a year in a in a competition against other schools in the Flathead. And so that's, that's really a lot of fun. And so the kids really look forward to it. And I have a pretty great group of kids coming up, lots of eighth graders that play. And I'm hoping this year to really be able to expand our seventh and sixth graders now that we are able to meet as a group again.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, any other teachers, Cal?
Stephanie, did we do the approval of the bills?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I must have missed it. Sorry.
Yep. Okay, we're past public comment. We can't, this is going to be hard to keep on going back. So I don't know, this isn't. Okay, Megan.
So I'm sorry, I didn't know how to raise my hand. So.
And you can write your name, you can write your name in the chat box too.
Okay.
For me to see. But go ahead. Did you want to make a non-agenda item comment?
Yeah, I just kind of wonder if maybe at the beginning of the meeting, you could let people know how to raise their hand. I sent in an email a while ago, a bit ago, and I would like.
Serena, can you start timing? Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to just go ahead and read that. My name is Megan and I have two kids that attend middle school at West Valley. I am talking tonight because I am ashamed that we have Stephanie on our school board. Last month, I was appalled at her behavior as a representative of us. There are several things that stuck out to me. She was elected to represent us as parents and as West Valley representative residents. Last month, she doesn't, last month, she said she does not have to vote based on his constituents. She will vote based on her personal feelings. She got angry at a mother that tried to speak up for our teachers, whom we are very protective of as parents. She threatened to mute the parent that spoke up about teaching, teachers getting paid for required quarantine just because she, it was asked in a question form rather than as a statement. She has moved all meetings unnecessarily to an online platform. My parents would like to attend school district meetings and are unable to because of internet issues. Not to mention, I have heard of several other people that were unable to get into the Zoom meeting. Why are these meetings being held in, online rather than in person? As of right now, we only have three people out for COVID in our school district. We need to get back to real life. I would like Stephanie to think about stepping down from our school board. The fact is, you don't represent the majority of the parents and the residents of the, of the West Valley School District. Cal, I would also like to address that you have decided to put in for a grant for a medical station within our school. Maybe we are not understanding this correctly and maybe you could clarify a bit. With the untrust already within our school district and our government, why would we have a medical station within our school? Is this by chance to give the school access to our underage kids so that they can poke and prod without an adult being there? I have a doctor for my children. I do not need it available in a place that I cannot be present.
Thank you. Okay. Um, back to West Valley Teachers Report. Was there anybody else, Cal?
Not that I know of. I think that was.
And Stephanie, do you want to, the chat is closed. So I don't think people, when I try to go to the chat, it says chat disabled. So.
Okay, Serena. Thank you, Gretchen, for noticing that. Okay, so now we're on to principals report. So here, Richard and Tina.
Hello, I'll go ahead and jump in first. So we are, can you hear me okay? Okay, so we're kind of making it through every day with our staffing shortages. We have had a lot of Paris fill in the classroom and everybody's pretty much pitching in a lot because it's kind of hard to fill it with so many people being out for one reason or another, or we're also down two Paris still in the elementary. We are currently going through as many groups as we can, which is kind of our learning model that we do. And so we have kind of some inconsistencies there. But our Paris have done an incredible job and teachers have done an incredible job of being flexible with that because it does change day to day. Sometimes we have groups, sometimes we don't. Our special ed department too has done a phenomenal job. Sean and the Paris in there, Carla, Heather and and Erin. We are starting to see more kids coming into West Valley with some special needs. And so, you know, we're really working to try to accommodate that and you know, to get the, the programs up and running. So we're kind of trying to build, you know, a program there that can accommodate some of those special needs. Just looking at the enrollment, I think the October count was something around 430 kids, which is really testing our infrastructure right now, K4, which, which is our lunchroom size. Our playground is not nearly big enough. And I think I get kind of, you know, a little bit poked fun of for mentioning it all the time to anybody who will give me an ear, but but we really need to start looking long-term as far as our facilities to accommodate our kids. And I mentioned too, to, to the staff that we're really starting to feel that growth. I know that the distance learning students were, were, you know, a lot of them were, were not in the school last year. And it was at least a couple of classrooms large at the elementary and we're really starting to feel that now. And so it's, you know, it's, it's kind of just taking all of us to, to realize we're just way too crowded for, for the facilities that we have in the elementary. But again, testament to our staff. So some of the fun things are that we're firing up field trips again. We've got, you know, Kinder on a field trip today. We've got first grade going this week, second grade going fairly soon too. So I'm excited that, that those things are happening again for our kids. It's really what they remember about school, what they love about school. And so I'm really excited to, to see that happening for them. Yeah, so it's, it's, you know, all going well. And we're, we're really proud of our staff for meeting the challenges every day.
Thank you. All right, Tina.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Alrighty, so we have some heavier things like they do in the elementary and then some work things going on. We haven't had as many absences in the middle school as far as with the adults and staff. It's maybe been slightly easier on our end than it has been for the elementary. Our English teachers are going to bring back the spelling bee. The script spelling bee is supposed to be able to run live this year. And we usually join up with the county later on. And so we're working on that. And we just got through most of the benchmark testing and then intervention groups are starting up for math and reading and Terry Deerfield works with that. Students have put in their applications recently for room reps. So we don't have ambassadors right now. And so we're getting a representative from all fifth through eighth grade rooms to help us bring those ideas from those students and also sharing information back out. And they'll have a few other things that they do through their counselors. And PLCs, the teachers are working on formative feedback and we hope to get some training more with that on November 1st and understanding and helping to project with students and have those discussions about their learning. And along with that, the teachers are working on rubrics. We've got two new contents that we have, two new physical curriculums and that would be the science and the social studies. So working on those rubrics and aligning that with standards. Those standards have a grade band, a sixth grade grade band. And so they're aligning those to make sure that we hit those important things across the years. And our football players play this week at Legends Stadium. That's always kind of exciting. And it's neat, I call it playing under the lights, but I love that. And I just want to thank the parents that were able to come in this past week and they decorated the lockers for our student athletes and made a really festive environment for the students. And just rooting for them from inside the school. And I've already had to ask, can I do that? Can we do that for other things? I, I think it was just great, just that input from parents and community. So. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Cal Superintendent Report.
I think Richard touched on this a little bit too about the student count. And I know, I think our student count for the fall in October was around seven 64 or five. And I actually, when I counted and got it into campus, I got closer to seven. So at this time last year, seven, 11. So we're up close, almost 8% kids before the school year. So that is, that's significant, you know. And so I think it kind of goes to what Richard was talking about there too. So just so you know that, and I don't think it's going to end anytime soon. And I do believe by the end of the school year, this is just me playing Nostradamus here a little bit. Well, we're going to keep adding kids as the year goes because houses are being, things are being finished as we go. So more kids are coming throughout the school year. And I think that will continue for some time. Just so you know that, you're going to hear about this later, obviously, in the agenda. But we do have a applicant for the business manager position, local person. Her name is Cecilia Llewellyn. And we are going to be interviewing her on Thursday at 3:00. And we are going to be interviewing her on uh, Thursday at three o'clock. And so if any board members would like to attend that, that would be great. Uh, and then we'll probably do a special board meeting if we decide to go forward with uh. With hiring this person. So right now she's the, oh, well, I shouldn't say the only applicant, we had another applicant from Arizona. And uh, we just didn't feel he was a uh, a strong candidate for the position, so. Uh, we will interview Cecilia and again, that's going to be Thursday at three o'clock and I can send out the invite for that too, to you guys. If you're willing to and want to uh, attend that. Uh, one thing we'd like to do, I think Richard was going to talk about this a little bit too, is we would love to have the board do a tour of the school during a school day. Uh, just to kind of see, you know, what goes on throughout the school. It's not going to be an all day thing or be, you know, for an hour, hour and a half probably. Uh, sometime during the school day and I will send out uh, dates. It'd be great if we could all do it at the same time, but if we can't, then we can make that work too, or. You know, whatever, however many board members can make it at a time to come out and just walk around the building, go into classrooms. I know the staff would love to see that, love to see uh, the the board members there. And uh, just check things out as they go, so uh, looking forward to that. I'll send that out again too as uh. I'll send out an email list with several dates on there that uh, that would work for board members to come in and and just walk through the buildings, to go into the classrooms. Go out of recess, because I know that was one thing that Richard talked about, uh, was recess time and how. How that's working, so we'd love to have that uh, happen as soon as possible before the snow flies. Which it sounds like it did in Bozeman already, so uh, hopefully we won't have, I know some of you want snow, but uh, I can, I can wait a little bit on that still. So anyway, we'll get that going. Um, also, uh, we'd like to put together a board work session. Uh, possibly before the next board meeting, uh, to have our admin team kind of go through some things uh, with uh. With the board, uh, dealing with just the district information, curriculum, uh, the direction, the strategic plan, different things that uh, we haven't. Had time to touch base with on, so just so the folks could get up to date on that too, so I'll uh, I'll put out some information on that as well. Facility wise, uh, real quick on that, some updates, the rooms that Phil was working on building, they're getting really close to being done. Uh, the only thing we're waiting on right now really is the uh, fire alarm system. There's a couple of parts that are on backwater and we're hoping to get those in this week. Uh, strobe lights and I and the pole stations for that, so hopefully we get those done uh, as soon as possible. And then uh, really, other than that, just the final um, uh, walkthrough of the building inspector. Uh, and then they're ready to go. Uh, Phil's done a great job, Phil and Tony did a great job on that and uh. Unfortunately, like most things right now, we're uh, we're just having a hard time getting parts for different things at times, so. Uh, hopefully that will happen this week and and we can get going on that, so. Uh, also, I know I talked about this before. Uh, you know, we've started to investigate the idea of portables and that will be a a board decision. But we're probably going to have to, if we decide to do that, we're probably going to have to do that sooner than later. Uh, and again, I've got some bids out for folks and they're going to be sending those to me, so I'll be able to share those with you. Um, in the near future, hopefully, it may be even as early as the next board meeting, so we're. Uh, we kind of go through some of that and that would take probably an intercap loan for that to happen. Uh, which I've started to process on that, just to make sure that we're uh, people are ready to go for deciding that. Uh, it's a necessary thing, as Richard was talking about space wise. So we need to look at that going forward too, possibly. Uh, I do want to address the uh, I think it was Megan who brought up. COVID testing and I think Krista did too. And so what that is, we've got a grant for rapid testing. Uh, students, this is a totally voluntary uh, thing. It's not something we're gonna, it has nothing to do with vaccination. Has nothing to do with anything, but if a student or family member wants to have a rapid test done, they can. And for the most part, it's not going to be done at the school. We've uh, joined forces with the Kalispell School District. About eight other school districts in the area and there are sites throughout the area, one's going to be at Snappy's and I'll be sending information out about this. Maybe tomorrow or the next day. One will be at Snappy's, one will be at uh, Kidsport. And the other one will be at the fairgrounds where people can go and get rapid tests done uh, during certain times of the day. Again, it's totally voluntary. There is no, uh, nobody's going to make anybody test or and it has absolutely nothing to do with vaccination, so. Uh, that was just a uh, something we got as a grant that several districts in the area wrote the grant for. And we individually, West Valley received, because it went off of your uh, student enrollment count, we got forty-five thousand dollars, which will go into a pot. That we all put together to pay for employees, pay for uh, they rented trailers, different things, so it's a portable. Uh, thing that if it's not happening at one place as much, they can reach us to someplace else too, so. Uh, we're looking at uh, at sharing that with the with those other, um, those other places, so. So that's something, I I hope that clarifies that a little bit. If you have uh, questions about that, certainly call the school and I can even, you know, give you more. But I will be sending out information on that, like I said, maybe as early as tomorrow or uh, or Wednesday. On where where to go, what times it'll be available. And they tried to make it so where it's available in the morning from a certain time and then also in the evening from like four to seven. For people as work schedules and different things, if they choose to do that and parents are also able to use that service too, so. Uh, just something that we thought was um. Good to do for the community. So anyway, that's that's a little more clarity on that and then uh, I think somebody else had a. Concern about the parking lot, uh, and I can tell you from, from doing this for a while, it's it's uh. Been looked at every way we can. And so just some of the history of that a little bit. Uh, we switched uh, from the entrance to the exit on the the one side to the other, I don't know, three, four years ago. I don't remember the exact date and part of it was that we came off a farm to market, there was a longer area where cars would be off the road. Uh, coming in that further south exit uh, entrance over there now. And so I know that, uh, you know, we've had, uh, I can tell you personally that uh, I've had several people. Uh, thank us for doing it the way it is right now and I know there's still some struggles with it. We're growing, I think part of it is you're having more kids dropped off this year. Uh, possibly due to mask mandates on the bus, you know, different things like that. But uh, we are getting some good feedback from it and I know it's not ideal, nothing is right now. And we would certainly love to hear other ideas, you know, from people if they have some. Uh, but really, quite frankly, by eight fifteen, when school uh, school is starting. There is very few, very few people out there still dropping off kids, so it is pretty efficient and so. And one of the reasons we put the cones up there was to make sure that we didn't have people filtering in throughout the parking lot, because what was happening. You had people going down all the different lanes and and doing that and what it does is actually creates a bottleneck as people are going out. Of the school parking lot, so by doing this, it actually creates one line where people have to. Uh, follow that and it actually is quicker. I know some people might not feel that way, but it but it actually is, so by eight fifteen. Uh, like I said, on most days, those that parking lot and the drop off is pretty much completely cleared out, so. Uh, it's it's pretty efficient as it is. I know there's some backup on farm to market, which we don't like and maybe we can work on some of those things, but uh. For right now, uh, you know, and and until we see some other ideas, uh, we also had CTA, uh, Cushing Terrell. So they looked at it too, uh, looked at the traffic uh, flow and the different things and they're going to give us some ideas too, but. Uh, quite frankly, off the right off top of their head, they didn't, they didn't see a whole lot that could be done right off the get go, so we'll keep working with them. Uh, we have talked about the possibility, this is strictly uh, just a uh, uh. Brainstorming idea of possibly building a road behind the school to drop off behind that would go out McManamy draw. And then come back around the backside of the school and out the front where uh, you currently uh, enter the parking lot, so those are just some ideas. And again, that's strictly just uh, um, just things we're thinking about as we're trying to improve it. Middle school, obviously, if you know, we we look at uh, you know, building another site, that would obviously uh, alleviate some of those problems too. Looking at that, so uh, we're going to continue to work on it, yeah, anybody that has ideas that could could possibly help. Uh, we would love to hear them, you know, because we're always looking to make it better as well, so. Uh, just a little bit of an update on that. Does anybody have any questions about that? I know that was a concern of some folks. All right, I'll keep moving forward, so.
I just, I I just think that there we definitely need to put some more effort into it and I know without more ideas and figuring out something completely different, it's. It it's not an easy solution to fixing it, but the number of cars that are backed up on on uh, farm to market, I think is the the biggest concern and. And the liability too, I think somebody's going to get hit, uh, cars are going to get rear ended, kids are going to get hurt and I think that's the part that we really need to. To see what we can do to address. But yeah, please, parents, teachers, everybody, if you have ideas, things that you're thinking of, um, please write in, let's see what we can do to put our brains together.
Yeah, thanks, Justin. So yeah, we we definitely want to make it as safe as possible, so. Okay, and then uh, the next thing is we had a steering committee meeting uh, last uh, Thursday and we had eighteen participants. Six staff members, one current board member and one past board member that was part of that as well. Um, the committee so far has recommended uh, uh, looking at a new middle school, you know. And we've got some projected costs of uh, twenty-four million for a middle school, then twenty-seven million if we do some additional work here at the uh. Older part of the building here on Farm to Market, uh, I can send and I will send all that information out to you. Um, possibly, you know, this will be something that the board will have to decide. Uh, if they want to send that out for a a vote uh, for that and uh, either this spring or next fall of twenty twenty-two. Um, but I will say this, and I mean this with all sincerity, is that this this bond will not have. Uh, any chance if we don't have commitment from the school board itself. And I'm not asking you, I'm not saying, you know, that you have to vote yes for it or no, whoever you want to vote. I'm just saying a commitment to being part of the the committee, part of the team. Because if if we don't, I'm just being trying to be honest and transparent and we don't have all five board members committed to this. It won't pass and that's just, that's just reality and so.
Just a quick comment on that, uh, it was bad timing, unfortunately, to be at that school board training that exact same night.
Yeah, no, and I I know that, I I'm not saying that, you know, that it was a, you know, one time deal, but. I'm just saying for the future going forward that we have to, we have to commit to this and again, um, it's it's. It's going to be a struggle at best, you know, to try to get this passed because it is a lot of money and and you know, taxes going up and different things, but. We want to do what's best for kids and I think that's what I've heard all the board members say, you know, that this is a, a thing that we need to do, if we don't do it. Uh, I think we're going to be really struggling to, to be able to uh, keep West Valley. Uh, the school that that people have grown to love over the years, you know, small class sizes, you won't get the same, uh, you won't get the same um. Uh, staff that would apply, you know, different things because the class sizes will get extra, uh, much bigger, much larger, you know, and so. I would just say that that commitment has to be made and and I hope that uh, you know, that you you know, some of you that that have social media and use it for different. Different ways and different things, that would be a good, I don't personally use it, so I I don't really, you know, have that. Uh, ability, but some do, that you could certainly use that to promote or at least to give information uh, about uh, the upcoming. Facilities and we're going to do a lot more work with that, but it is a lot of work and so I need to know commitment and I need to know, make sure that we're all committed to doing that. Going forward in the future, so um, anyway, that's all I have for today.
Okay. Um, now we will move on to our first action item and it is discussion and possible action of the board disclaiming and separating itself. From the actions of the an individual trustee and I want to be honest that I didn't even know that this was something that. Could or needed to ever be done on a school board, but um, Justin, this is about your social media post that happened. Before the last board meeting and I don't have Facebook, I don't have Instagram, Snapchat, I don't do any of that, but. Uh, before that meeting, we were receiving, I was receiving information, Cal was receiving in information. Of your uh, posts, the one with the swastika made out of syringes. Uh, the one about Faust Fauci needing to be executed. And then there was another one that you said Gianforte should take the power away from school boards and superintendents. And stop child abuse and that was a week after you supported a motion to give Cal. The authority to mandate masks at a moment's notice of need be. And so, and then at the last meeting, we had people who were um, wanted to do a recall petition, well, that obviously isn't happening anymore. And.
But.
Well, so this is the deal.
We are all. I'm going to stop you, I'm going to stop you right there, you don't have the right to to continue slander, to talk negatively about me, I'm going to read a statement. And then you guys can make your motion and whatever you would like to do from there. Um, I was just as surprised as all of you to see action item A for tonight's agenda. Considering there has been zero communications with me as an individual regarding the matter from the school board chair, members or superintendent. Actually, zero communications about anything since the last board meeting, so I decided to take it upon myself to make this statement. I never claimed to be speaking on behalf of the West Valley School Board. I was under the impression that we were voted here by the community as individuals who work together for the greater good of our children and our educational needs. I speak for myself, my opinions and for my beliefs, which are protected not only by the Constitution of Montana. But the Constitution of the United States of America. I speak on my behalf, myself and myself only. With this being said, the children of the school, their education and their wellbeing comes first when I'm sitting on this board and acting as a West Valley Board Member. I try my hardest to listen intently to what you as parents in our community want, I'm here working for you. Since it is not apparent already that we are individuals with private lives and personal opinions. I would also like to ask to have this implemented at the annual bylaws meeting, a statement indicating that we are individuals and we have our rights to our own opinions. That is for all board members. I have also reached out to the Montana um, School Board Association and spoke with the Executive Director Lance Melton. Um, that is a very common practice that at school board um. Uh, bylaws meetings that that statement is implemented, that we all have our own personal lives that are separated. From the board, but when we step on the board, we act as board members and for our parents and for our children. While. Sitting up here in front of everyone, I can assure you that I'm here for the parents, the community and our children. I also want to make it blunt bluntly clear that I want to hear from the parents, I want to hear from our teachers, I want to know your concerns that need to be addressed. My personal views will not hinder my abilities, I want to serve this community with the best of my ability.
Um, Justin, thank you for that statement and I I want you to understand that this motion is, it's. We need to do this motion to protect the school from liability from all of our personal actions and you are absolutely right, you have. First Amendment rights, we all do. The problem is, is there, there is this idea in law called a parent authority. And when you actually post things on social media privately because you are an elected public official. People in the community perceive that as West Valley School District actually making those statements. And the one in particular that could really get our district in trouble and we could be sued legitimately and be liable. Is the swastika with the syringes because I under, my understanding is that is an anti-vaccine post. And House Bill seven oh two is very specific that we cannot discriminate based on someone's vaccination status. And someone, if we do not do this motion, could legitimately sue this district because of your post. So this motion, if you read it, doesn't have your name in it. It is about supporting the fact that we, as we sit on this board, we only have authority as a board. And when we are doing something in the community individually, that does not reflect us as a board, we cannot own it as a board. Because if you do, then we are setting up the district for lawsuits. That is why we have to pass this motion and unfortunately, it was your actions that brought it to the forefront. And is why we actually had to put it on the agenda, so.
That statement and that action should be about every board member then, because all of us have our personal and private lines, we all speak to individual people and. Um, as we think we are speaking to them privately, we all have different ways of communicating and. Yes, when we are on this board, we are a board united by our decisions, whether we agree with them or not, I one hundred percent agree.
Okay, so can you let me just read what the motion would be and I hope you can understand that the actual motion does not include your name. But this is the motion language as provided by Montana School Board Association. Montana law requires that this board act only as a board. Only the vote of a majority of this board's members creates action by this board. Under twenty-three, three oh one MCA, we as trustees are only to exercise our power and perform our duties. As trustees when doing so collectively and only at a regularly or properly called special meeting. Further, under twenty-three, three, three, two MCA, it is only when acting in their official capacity at a regular or special meeting of the board. Or a committee thereof, that the trustees of each district are individually immune from suit for damages as provided. or a committee thereof that the trustees of each district are individually immune from suit for damages as provided in 29305 MCA. In light of the fact that Montana law requires that we act as a board and only take action collectively, I am concerned regarding the community's interpretation of the recent actions of Justin Bowles, a single member of our board. In light of those concerns, I move as follows. The actions of a single member of this board are not the actions of this board of trustees. That the community and its members be placed on notice that unless specifically authorized by motion of this board, an individual trustee of this board holds the power of and expresses his or her opinion as an individual community member, and that such individual statements and or opinions should not be construed as the statements and or positions of the board of trustees. That last part is the formal motion that we need to pass that is on record to protect this district from what any of us say privately off of this board during a public meeting. And I don't know how anybody could disagree with that. It protects the district, and it doesn't say you don't have First Amendment rights. Does anybody else want to speak?
You know, I'd just like to say that I, you know, in very board training sessions that that I've been on, they they really stressed that the individual has to be careful what they say because it represents what the board thinks. And and also that when people send us emails at the West Valley website, that we're cautious in how we answer them. And in fact, maybe shouldn't even answer except to say thank you for your input, because that is, it's sort of a reflection. If you answer their email directly, then that would indicate that that's what the board thinks. So what we need to do is just be very careful that we don't reach out to individuals and act as a, as like we're speaking for the board. So, and and I, you know, in effect, it muzzles community or school board members, because they can't say what they want all the time in response to everybody's problems. You, you have to, you have to wait for a board meeting to speak on it and take all the input that you hear, and then reflect that in your voting at the board meetings. So in my, my concern is that in, you know, when we go to school board elections, that people are going to think that those of us who have not directly reached out and answered emails are going to say that we are disinterested and don't care what the people think. It's not that way at all. We have been directed by lawyers and people in training sessions to not to directly reach out to people and answer their questions. Many times, it's a superintendent's thing, and some of these emails should be directed to them to Cal directly. What's that? I didn't hear that. Anyway, that's, I guess that's the, just the way I look at it, is that we just have to be really careful. And Stephanie's been and and there is reason for that. We have to have it, or we have chaos. Not that we don't care what every single individual parent thinks, but we have to think of the better, the the welfare of the group, of the whole group. That's just how it works. So I guess I think that there's nothing in that motion that isn't oh, that's what all of us need to do. So I, I guess I would make that motion easily.
I would second the motion, and I apologize. My kids just got home.
Did you want to add anything to that, Gretchen?
You know, I I know, Justin, it, you're, it not just feels, but you were being pointed out, you know, I'm grateful that this happened, so we could bring it to light and have a discussion about it. So it is, just to reiterate, it includes all of us and our actions. And I think, I know you're very passionate about things, but just keep in mind, when we, when we are elected or in my case appointed to the school board, we were held to a different standard. And people look at us and and watch us and our, how we conduct ourselves in our private life. Again, another thing I'm thankful for, I have tried to be consistent in wearing a mask in public, even though it's highly uncomfortable, and I wear one all day for my job, but I have to think, who's watching me? Who's going to hold me accountable? So I I appreciate this agenda item.
And one other thing I want to point out, too, I think, Justin, you have to understand that as elected public officials, we have no right to privacy. And everything that gets sent to me that people claim about any of us becomes public record. And so, you know, you talk about slander. Slander is when you intentionally spread misinformation about someone. I haven't spread anything about you. Quite the contrary, I've received information. And as board chair of this district and presiding officer of this board, I have to do something to protect this board. So I don't do Facebook. I don't, I didn't know anything about it, but people were sending me all this information, and they were sending Cal information, too. And the other piece of this you have to understand, and I want Cal to speak to this, is that we do all the hiring and firing. We are the employee of this district, employers of this district, and being, some of the teachers are very uncomfortable with some of those social media postings, because you're one of their bosses. And so it makes them very uncomfortable, and parents are uncomfortable. So Cal, do you want to address that issue?
Well, if you're gonna say a statement like that, I'd also like to point out that there's many teachers that are uncomfortable with you as our board chair, and many parents in this district that are uncomfortable with you as a chair as well. I have nothing against a statement as long as it applies to the entire board.
And this one does.
Oh.
We lost him.
Yep, we kind of froze. It's wait. Is it just you and me, Marilyn?
We're okay. I, you, I can hear you. I can't, I, Justin got coughed, or, yeah. I don't know.
Cal, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you too as well. I am. I don't know how much of that you heard.
No, you kind of got, it kind of glitched out, so go ahead and continue.
I don't know where it left off, but I, there has been multiple parents, teachers, staff members that have also voiced similar concerns about you, especially as board chair with some of the actions that you you have been through personally. I don't have a problem with a statement disclaiming and separating from personal views in the board, as long as it applies to every board member. But since the beginning of this action item, you have individually pointed me out on several occasions. And yeah, maybe I am the one that brought this to light, but this similar statement applies to all of us, and it should be treated as such.
Yes, and we just have to understand, we are only immune from lawsuits when we act collectively.
I know a lot better than you do on this, trust me.
Well, Cal, do you want to speak to what I asked you about?
Yeah, Stephanie, thanks for, let me talk for a few minutes here. So one, I can tell you that, you know, we're only going to get to where we need to go if if we really truly work as a team on this. And so by going back and forth and, you know, saying this and that, whatever it might be, all we're doing is digging a deeper hole here, you know, for this board. And I can tell you from past experiences working with boards for the majority of my thirty years in the education, that we have work to do. And it's everybody that has work to do. It isn't just one of us. And but I'll say this, and what Stephanie was alluding to, and, you know, whether we say, you know, this staff member doesn't want this person or that, I can tell you this, that I have had no fewer than ten staff members come to me unsolicited with extreme concerns about the postings that were on Justin's website, obviously, that some of the actions that have been taken since he's been on the board, different things, and that I guess I look at it like this, like Stephanie said, and Marilyn said, we are, and I think Gretchen too, we're held to higher accountability. We have to be civil human beings, even when we don't want to be sometimes. You know, I can think back last, I don't know how many board members ago, meetings ago it was, where, you know, people were accusing of different things, you know, getting up there and pointing fingers and, you know, saying this and that. And quite frankly, I'm gonna address that right now. As far as secret meetings, there weren't any. Okay, and I'm gonna address that right now, because it's the absolute truth. And the fact of it is, is that that needs to be put to bed. That needs to be put to rest, and all the other things, the mask mandates, the mask issues, things like that. Those are done. We need to pass on and move on from that and actually grow as a board. Because if we don't, I I heard Justin say, I'm in this for the kids, and we all are. That's why we got into this business, and let's make sure that we 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 show that in our actions, and we're not bullying people, we're not harassing people, and we're not, you know, doing what we're doing. Because I can tell you, of those people that have come and talked to me unsolicited, I don't go asking for this. They came and are very concerned about the actions of our, some of our newly elected board members, and are worried about the future of West Valley School District. And so you, if you want to truly, like you just said, Justin, if you want to truly hear from the staff, I don't know if they'll say it to you or not, because quite frankly, they're, they're, they're afraid, you know, to to say things.
Let me finish. No, 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 I'm not gonna put up with that. No, don't talk over me either. You're not gonna get to lecture me, because you know, I, I'm telling you. Saying to me that they're afraid of you and getting fired if they speak up.
I can't fire them.
Well, they're afraid of you. They don't want to talk to you. So there's dozens of them that don't want to talk to you because they're afraid of you.
Talking about right now.
I don't need a lecture from you at all. Zero percent. Don't lecture me. Keep my name out of this action. The action as read had my name in it, and I'm not gonna stand for it. It'll be the lawsuit if you keep it in there.
What I know.
So it'll be a lawsuit if you keep it in there.
Okay.
Stephanie, can you reread the action?
The motion does not have-
Yeah, the motion does not have your name in it.
The motion as you read it did.
No, no, there was motion language, Justin. Honestly, I mean, you've been on this board for five months, and in five months, all we have to do is try to run damage control. And so honestly, let, let me-
Because of you.
Okay.
Stephanie, can you just reread the motion, please?
The motion is, I move as follows. The action of a single member of this board are not the actions of this board of trustees. That the community and its members be placed on notice that unless specifically authorized by the motion of this board, an individual trustee of this board holds the power of and expresses his or opinion as an individual community member, and that such individual statements and or opinions should not be construed as the statements and or positions of the board of trustees. That is the motion.
That's it.
The information before was background Montana law and why we need to do the motion.
So it's a generic motion that covers every board member.
So do we have any more? So Marilyn, did you make that motion?
Right.
And Gretchen, you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any more board discussion before I open up to public comment? Okay. So if anybody wants to speak regarding this action item, is the chat box working right now, Serena?
I would just like to ask Cal, Marilyn has that motion written down on paper?
It's used, it's written down in the agenda. You have it too, Justin.
It's actually not written in the agenda, the actual motion.
It's in your board packet. It is in there.
It's in the MTS-
I'm reading it, too.
It's in the MTSBA, setting the stage for effective board meetings, which went out and on our email from Serena. It's the last-
An email for Serena that I did not get. I would just like that on record.
It is in your board packet. You didn't-
No, no, she got an email for Serena that I didn't know. I just want that on.
Page seventeen of the, of the guide for maintaining appropriate decorum in challenging times from the MTSBA, and I have it printed out because I print things off the internet. I don't, I can't read real well. I print it. That's why it's sitting here printed.
Yeah, you just stated that you received it in the email from Serena, which I didn't.
In the email with the agenda that was attached, Justin.
I got it, too.
Yeah, open up your agenda and read it. That's where it was.
If you guys have emails between yourselves and don't include the rest of the board members, I just-
It was sent in a packet to all of us.
Yeah, I don't know why you keep on saying that. Open up your email right now and look at the agenda that was sent to you and all of the board. It's in there. It's on page three. So I don't understand why you hadn't read that before this meeting.
And and the, the, the four of you, Stephanie, Marilyn, Gretchen, and Cal have no conversations about this prior to this meeting?
No, I told you, I talked with Marilyn about this.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you can, we can talk, two board members can talk, two board members can put an action item on the agenda. You have to talk about it before you put it on there. I, you don't understand the rules, Justin, and you, you-
Actually, I know the rules better than you do. I was just having you qualify what you said, so it's fine.
I just want, I just want to make sure that this was a generic motion that covers all of us.
Yep, it does.
Anything out of this, this-
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there any public comment? Okay, I don't see, nobody's Parker.
I see some hands waving.
Okay, I see, it looks like Parker, so we'll start with Parker. All right, so Serena, get the timer. And Parker, I will unmute you. You should be unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yep, and I just want to remind people that comment right now is about the motion and second, the action item. Two minutes, go ahead.
Yeah, just, you know, sitting back here, listening to all this. I don't see what is to be gained. I I actually don't have a problem with the motion being directed at all board members. I think where we run into trouble with this is the way it was presented. I mean, I'm just sitting here listening to this whole thing, and I do feel that it's, it comes across as very political, that someone doesn't agree with maybe two or three board members, and so we're going to point that person out, and what they say or do is contradictory and could be harmful to the rest of the board. And I actually think some good points were brought up that this does go both ways, right? It's, there are people that may be unhappy with Justin, but there's also people that are unhappy with the other board members. Unfortunately, as a board member, you're probably not going to hear that, because they're probably not going to come to you. The people that you're going to hear from are the people that agree with you, not the people that disagree with you so much. And so I guess I would just like a little bit more decorum on both sides, and I don't understand why when this was brought, why it was even needed necessarily, I guess, to point out that, you know, Justin had some things on his social media that some people didn't agree with. That's going to happen in life. Just like the rest of the board has come to decisions that a lot of people don't disagree with, or I'm sorry, a lot of people do disagree with. Yet that's not a reason to point out that board member or other board members. So I would hope in the future that this could be done with a little bit more decorum and not necessarily, to me, it really did, it feels like an attack on one board member, and I just don't think that was necessary, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, and then it looks like Biggs. Let me close that. Okay, you are unmuted. Go for it.
Great, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so I don't have a problem with the generic version of this. As Parker mentioned, the way that it was brought about was unacceptable. I actually looked at the posting, a swastika made out of syringes. If anybody cared to see what that was relative to was towards Biden's vaccine mandate. It was perfectly clear on what that was about, and our president was taking the opportunity to make a dictatorial proclamation. Anybody that had half a brain could see that was what it was about. Anybody that's writing in saying they fear a board member for his own personal beliefs is obviously got an ideological axe to grind. And the chairperson of this board has the same axe to grind. It's evident in how she promoted this. She tries to approach it as the legal team says it needs to be done. But the attack on Justin was totally unprepared. I've actually known people personally and relative- and relatives that have seen our chairperson in social situations acting completely like an act. Okay, and she reflects on the board? Is that what she's saying? All her social interactions reflect on the board? And yet, what she has done in her private life has some very questionable activities herself, even though it might be posted on social media. So, you know, this is a completely one-sided attack. And as far as anybody goes, like Cal saying ten different people are afraid for their jobs. Okay, well, great. They're all afraid for their jobs for one reason or another. Everybody is. This board was elected. The other three members, the liberal members of this board have no business attacking the other board members for any reason whatsoever, because you have your own axe to grind and it's, it's very evident on how you approach this whole activity. You have just bought yourself a recall election if you really want one.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I don't see any. Are there any other hands up? I don't see anybody else in the chat. Okay, um. Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Marilyn?
Hi.
Hi, I'm I. Gretchen?
Hi.
Chad? Oh, wait, 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 Chad, he, Chad, you were muted.
I was trying to do the video, I hit the mute. Hi.
You have anything you wanted to say about this, or do you just want to make a vote?
I just, I vote.
Do you yay or nay?
Yay.
Yay, okay. And Justin?
I have generic language, yes.
So, okay. All right, moving on. So, next action.
Before we move on, would like also be since it is on this action item, also like to make motion that we renew this statement at every, every bylaws meeting each year annually.
Um, well, we can talk about that motion for the next meeting. Okay.
All the motion would need is a second if somebody has one.
No, we can't add a motion. We can't add another action item to the agenda.
Directly related to this action item, so we can.
Hmm, I don't know. We can't do that. We can, we can talk about it and add it to the next meeting. I'm not quite, I don't quite understand what you, what your motion would be, but.
I stated it clearly that the motion that we just passed would be something that we pass at every bylaws meeting annually.
What do you mean by bylaws meeting?
At our, at our yearly bylaws meeting, yearly initial meeting, whichever one that you want to call, that this motion be granted yearly from now on.
You mean our budget meeting in August?
Yeah, that would be a good meeting. That's a good yearly meeting.
Well, we, like I said, we'll have, we can't just add, we can't add the motion to this agenda, but we can talk about it.
Actually, that's not adding it. It's the exact action item you listed.
No, it's not. We just passed, we just passed action on that motion.
All right, twist whatever you want. Good job. Actually, I created a motion. If anybody wants a second, go for it.
I think what she's saying is we can't add an action item without it being published and available to the public.
Item. Laws and rules.
Okay, you know what, Justin, I'm just gonna say to you, the whole point of this motion is so we can move forward and actually do the work of the board. And the way you're acting right now is not okay. And don't, you think you can talk over everybody else and you can insult us and say we don't know things and that you somehow are the most intelligent member of this board?
No, let's stop.
That is what is happening.
Okay.
Can we move on?
Yeah, I want to move on, but he's not wanting to stop, so we will continue with the agenda. The current agenda that's been posted.
Thank you.
So, second action item, consideration of math coach stipend.
So you heard from Emily Black, our math teacher. She's been doing this math counts since she's gotten here pretty much, and so, and there's no compensation and the hours put in. I think you have the, the proposal she put together, it was in the packet. And I would, I would, I would say, yes, I.
No. Is it just you, me, and Marilyn? Are they all stopped?
I can hear you too. I can't hear Cal. He's.
Okay, yeah.
Should be something that compensated for.
Okay, you kind of glitched out, but yes.
I, I recommend it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I make a motion.
How much?
It's on the scale there. It should be on that sheet that you have. So the scale would be like first year is six oh seven eighty-eight.
Hey. Ken? Did you get the information, Marilyn? I don't know, stuff is glitching out all of a sudden.
Yeah. Right now, I got you and Cal all right, but nobody else is.
Gretchen, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, so you made the motion, Gretchen?
Yes, I make, yes.
And Marilyn seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any community comments? Okay. Um, all those in favor? Gretchen?
Hi.
Marilyn? Chad?
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Hi, okay. Next, consideration of new hires Heidi Durbin, food service supervisor.
Yeah, so as we talked about earlier, that, that we knew that was gonna be a position that was pretty tough to fill, especially as the school year had already started. And so Heidi Durbin came in and sub for us, and she actually worked in the kitchen the last, last year, part of last year, and has subbed in there quite a bit too. And so she came to me after subbing in there and asked if we consider her as the food, you know, putting her in the food service director position. And she doesn't obviously have the experience in that particular role. She does have experience in the kitchen. And so at this time, we need, you know, we need people in that kitchen and we need people who know what they're doing within the kitchen. And so I would recommend hiring Heidi for this position with training. Making sure that she gets the, the proper training that she needs for this and that we keep evaluating it as the year goes on, you know. And so we want to make sure that we're giving every employee, but this one, you know, with this type of job, which is a school job, but it's not really a school job. All the benefits of trying to make sure that they get the, the best training that they can get. And we want to, you know, see this be a position that's filled for years to come. So I will just say that, you know, I recommend it and that we will continue to evaluate it as the year goes on.
Okay.
I would make a motion to hire Heidi Durbin.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any public comment? All right, all those in favor? Gretchen?
Hi.
Marilyn?
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Hi, all right. A consideration of boys' basketball coaching hires. David Baker, Jessica Levitt, Terry Darrenfield, Rich Nickerson.
And all four of those people have coached and did a great job before, so I would recommend them without any reservations.
Okay, I move that we accept the boys' basketball coaching hires as listed.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any public comment? Okay, all those in favor? Gretchen?
Hi.
Marilyn?
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, consideration of student attendance agreements.
Oh, written in the information, there are fifty-seven student attendance agreements for students that live in other districts, but they're attending West Valley. Um, and these are students that have either already been attending or they have siblings that are here and then sort of kind of grandfathered in kind of thing. But we aren't accepting anyone new beyond that. The district charge is eleven hundred dollars per student and forty-five thousand dollars is included in the general fund budget for this, as a part of this. And then the remainder goes into the miscellaneous fund and has to be used by the end of the year. So we just need a motion to approve the fifty-seven student attendance agreement.
Okay.
A motion to approve the students.
I just have a question as to why the, where these fifty-seven extra students are coming from again?
Um, they are coming from various areas. It's not anything new. The majority of them have already been here this entire time. Um, some of them are all need Bissel, Helena Flats, Whitefish, Summers, Smith Valley. The majority of them are coming from Kalispell though.
Why are we letting them come here again?
We have this entire time. It's not anybody new to the majority.
So, so Marilyn, these kids were pretty much grandfathered in from before. So we've, we've put a, we've curtailed any new open enrollments for now, you know, because of the, the enrollment that we're getting within the district. So, and that will probably continue for the next several years.
Sure. Well, we're still letting siblings of kids that are attending here now, though, we're letting them in as, as they get kindergarten age. So if the kids attending Sully's school and they have a couple little brothers and sisters, we're letting them come in too, even though they may be from Bissel or Marion or wherever.
We'll, we'll evaluate that on a case by case, because it really goes by how much, you know, what's your population in each one of those grade levels, you know? And so we are telling people that basically there isn't any more of that, you know, sibling, you know, because we, you know, because we don't.
Yeah, thank you.
Not a kindergartner, you know, that kind of thing. So, yeah. So we're really, really kind of just putting a kibosh on it, yeah.
Good. Good. I remember when we, a couple, it was last year at this time, we, I mean, everybody felt very strongly that we just don't need to bring other kids in, even though there might be a slot today. There's probably another kid that's moving into West Valley, let's slot tomorrow, so. Okay, so that, that's the policy. We're still putting a kibosh on, on students not from the area. Okay, I just want to be sure of that.
Well, it even goes as far as, because we have people telling us, you know, almost daily that, well, I've got a house being built in the West Valley District, but it won't be ready until October, November, December, whatever month it is. And we still have them enroll in the district that they're in currently. And then we, because, because what's happening is those houses aren't getting finished, you know, and so.
Hey, do we have a motion in a second? Or no, we don't have a second yet?
I'll second.
Okay, and we have a motion in a second. Any public comment? Okay, all those in favor? Gretchen?
Hi.
Marilyn?
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, consideration of students, student attendance agreements for students attending other districts.
Now, we have two students at this time. They usually come a little later. Um, the, the agreements do, that they are attending summer school district, but they live in our school district.
Hey, why do, I just have a question procedurally. Why do we have to consider other students attending other school districts? We don't pay tuition to summers.
No, but we're losing the students, so we have to say it's okay basically for them to go to that district, you know, because.
Gotcha.
Yeah. It's kind of a formality, sort of, I guess.
And they take their money with them then and go to that district.
They get the A and B for it, yeah.
Okay.
Are they good basketball players?
Well, Gretchen, we don't go off of that criteria.
I would make a motion to accept those students attending summers.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any public comment? Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Marilyn?
Hi.
Justin? Chad?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi, hi. Hi.
And did Justin say I?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and I, okay. Uh, consideration of renewing the Northwest Montana Lake District Retirement Agreement.
So, uh, we are part of a few multi-district agreements, and this is one of them. Um, so it's a three-year agreement renewal for West Valley to be part of this consortium, and it helps keep the administrative costs down. Um, when it first started, Smith Valley and West Valley had already started with this group, Admin Partners. Um, and once we joined this consortium, the fees for the individual schools went down considerably. So it helps keep costs down and it is part of the benefits for the employees where it offers the Pro 3D and the 457. And it provides with about six providers.
So I have a question. I know it's, this is on a bigger scale, of course, but there's been some public entities leaving, like a county retirement fund. An entity has left that county retirement fund and the county ended up suing that business. Do you know what I'm talking about? They sued the business to recoup the, the future losses to their retirement fund. Would we? Would there be any recourse if we left this cooper, whatever this is?
No, so the only thing, um, this is, so it's part of a third party. So there's all of these compliance type of things, bookkeeping, monitoring that are required to be done. So Admin Partners is the group that we hire as a collective. And then from there, um, you know, as a group, we decided who we allowed. So there's, you know, Thrivent, there's Balick, there's Vanguard, there's Horace Mann. So it's not that, um, if we were to leave, the fee providers would go away. Um, it's just when we are paying the fees for the bookkeeping and compliance thing, that's what's keeping our, our costs down. We could still offer those same providers.
Okay, so we're not contributing to a retirement fund. This is just administrative, okay?
For you, yeah, yeah.
Serena, you think it's a good idea to renew this?
I do.
Okay, I move that we renew that Northwest, West Valley, multi-district retirement. Okay, I move that we renew that, this was multi-district retirement agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a, a motion in a second, any public comment? All right, all those in favor, Gretchen?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Now, consideration of change to policy seventy-four zero five procurement card use, second and final reading.
This is that policy that was brought forth for the first reading at the last one, increasing the school district's limit on all of the district cards as a collective, not individually, to a hundred and fifty district limits, as opposed to a hundred thousand, due to the increased purchases and various things that have led to the.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt that language.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any public comment? Okay, all those in favor, Gretchen?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
And aye. Okay. Um, let's see, what is next? I lost my spot. Consideration of change to policy nineteen-ten, personal use of leave.
So, so that's the one that started way back when, you know, we gave ten days of eighty hours, basically, of time to anybody that had COVID or had to take care of somebody in their family, direct family member who had COVID, and needed to be either quarantined or stay at home with them. So, uh, that's, that's what the policy states now. I don't know if you read it, hopefully you read the policy, but basically, it states the same thing, that for this year, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, retroactive, back to the start of the school year, August thirtieth through June tenth, that, that would be in place as well, that we would honor the ten days of folks who either like one got COVID or two had to take care of a family member directly that had COVID itself. So, a, a family member of some kind. So, it's a first reading, uh, so it has to have two readings, but, uh, we would look at it to be retroactive back to the start of the school year, if it is approved after the second reading.
Hey?
I will make a motion to approve the first reading of that policy, and I would just like to say out loud that I think this is a fantastic thing. I think our teachers deserve it, and our staff deserve it. So, thank you.
I'll second, I'll go ahead and second.
Okay, great, thank you. We have a motion in a second, any public comment? Okay, all those in favor, Gretchen?
Aye.
Marilyn? Justin?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
And aye. Okay, now we have to consider required policy changes due to legislature and other law changes, first and final readings. And hopefully, everybody reviewed them.
No, I, I would just say that, like you said before, that we use MTSBA, we go through them for our policies, and they go through these policies continuously. And, and these are ones that either need to be updated, required updates, and some of them are due to laws that were passed and different things. But, uh, I would just say, we, as far as we, when we looked through them, there wasn't anything that we felt needed to be changed. There are a couple, actually, that when you look at them. Number eight, policy thirty-two thirty-five, video surveillance. We do have some cameras in the building that have audio option. And so, uh, option two would be the one on that one, unless you didn't want to have video or audio at all in those. But we've used audio for as long as that building's been open. And quite frankly, we've very seldom ever had to use it, but, uh, it's there if we need it. And it's not in all, it's not on all the cameras, it's only on some, particularly in the hallways and places like that. So, uh, that would be one, an option has to be chosen. And then, also, uh, number nine, policy thirty-three eleven, firearms and weapons. There are three options, I believe, on that one, uh, that to choose from. And currently, I believe, we have option three chosen in that policy that we have. And, uh, so it'll be up to the board to decide, you know, what option they want to go with on that. Personally, uh, it's, it's fine, it's worked well. But if there was a different option that somebody chose, that's, they're all, none of them are bad options necessarily. It's just whatever the board decides they want to choose. So, other than that, of the fourteen policies we've gone through, I would recommend approving all of them as written. And I would take any questions, if anybody has any questions.
How can we do them as written when they have the options? How do we?
You, you guys would need to look at those policies and, uh, choose the option, yeah.
Well, didn't you say for the, which one is it? I'm just looking at it.
The number eight.
Thirty-three eleven, we already have chosen three.
Yeah, three, yes, uh, currently.
Okay. Okay.
So, do we want to make a motion to approve all of them except for thirty-three eleven?
No, we just, we've already selected option three.
Oh, that must have been before my time.
Yeah. So, you want to make a motion to approve all of them, first and final reading?
Yes, I will make a motion as stated.
I'll second.
Okay. So, we have a motion in a second, any public comment? Okay. All those in favor, Gretchen?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
And aye. All right, next batch, recommended changes. And this is just the first reading, so we can't, we're not approving them for, finally, we just have to approve the first reading.
Right, correct, so, but if, if anybody has any questions about them, you know, we went through these two, and you've got the updated parts in there. So, uh, yeah, if you have any questions, go ahead and ask them.
I had a question on the one with athletic student participation. But no, I'm not finding which one talks about, um, who can play on the teams.
So, I, I don't know if your question's pertaining to this, but basically, the law was passed that we, anybody in the district, whether you're homeschool, you know, any of those kinds of things, that we can't discriminate, we can't say, no, you can't participate. And we've actually already done it, we've done it already, you know, in different places. We've, you know, especially with the football team in particular, we, we take kids from, we've taken homeschool kids, we've taken kids from Marion, Kylis, Smith Valley, all over the place. So, it's, it's not anything we haven't done in the past. And now, it's basically a law that you can't deny somebody because of their, uh, whether they're in a public school or not, essentially.
Yeah, no, I found it. It's the school-sponsored student activities. Uh, there's some conflictual language in that one. Um, so can we talk about them individually, or?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're not approving them anyways, so.
Okay.
But you're approving the first reading, but not the, yeah.
Okay. So, there's one. The, uh, sorry, scrolling through. That all, so all teams are open to anybody. I think it's three, section B. So, in letter I, open all sports to all students enrolled in the district with an equal opportunity for participation. So, I'm assuming that's if a girl wants to play football, she can play football. Is that what that means?
Yeah, to, to a degree. It, it's not, you know, uh, this is more, I guess, I'm, I'm not going to say it isn't just for high school, but it is kind of more high school-driven. But when you look at it, it, when it says, open all sports to all students enrolled in the district with an equal opportunity for participation, so that's title nine, basically. So, when you look at title nine, title nine doesn't mean that there has to be, uh, four girls' sports and four boys' sports. It just means there has to be an equal number of participants in sports in particular. So, let's say you have football, which might have thirty kids, and, uh, girls' basketball might have fifteen. There has to be an equal number, an equal opportunity for both genders to participate in a sport. Does that make sense? So, it doesn't go by number of sports necessarily. It goes by how many can participate. So, yes, can a girl participate in football? Yeah, she can. But right now, it's not the same if a boy wants to participate in, say, volleyball, because they just, they don't allow it, you know, necessarily. So, it's kind of, um, I can, I, you know, what I can do is, I, because it is a little unclear exactly how that's written, you know? And so, I, I'll contact, if, I'll contact, uh, MTSBA and, and see exactly what that, what that means.
Well, because I'm holding it up against, uh, number five designation of athletic teams. I know this is a hot-button issue of prohibiting essentially transgender children from participating in their unassigned, um, gender. So, to me, those, those two conflict.
They do, yeah.
And then, my second question is, is what is our consequence if we don't approve number five? Are we withheld funding?
Uh, no, no, I don't know the answer to that. I don't think you're going to get help with that. I mean, there's a possibility that you, uh, let me read five real quick. Yeah, so basically, what it's saying is that if it's a girl's sport, right, sponsored athletic team or a sports designated for females, women, or girls, may not open to students who are biologically of the male sex. So, that's what I, that's what I was saying, basically, is that boys can't play, you know, volleyball, even though volleyball's not offered for boys.
No, I agree, I think it'd be wise to turn to the MTSBA for language on this, because I think there's been recent Montana State laws that have been put into effect in regards to this. And I'm guessing they have language already prepared for it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll contact them to get a little more clarity.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up, Gretchen.
Do you want to table that one and then approve or make a motion for the rest of them?
I just have a wording issue on twelve-ten. There's on line twenty-four, it says, the chairperson may make a motion, but may make, may second motions. It just, it doesn't.
Yeah, it's, uh, which policy was that?
It's twelve, twelve-ten.
Okay.
It's line twenty-four.
Yeah. I know they were removing it, because according to Montana law, the chairperson can make a motion, but a lot of district policies say they can't, they can only second motions.
So, the wording should just be, the chairperson may make a motion and second.
A second, yeah.
Correct, yep. Okay, we can make that change, too. Okay.
Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion about approving these?
So, so does it say that, should it say the chairperson may make a motion and may second motions?
Yeah, may make and may make a motion and second motions, yeah. I know, it sounds weird the way.
You'd have to be able to say the chairperson may make a motion and may second motions, because that stands, the but is good, but it wouldn't be if you changed, took the.
Yeah.
Not out.
Okay. So, does somebody, go ahead.
I'm not sure how to word it, other than I would make a motion to, to have a, to consider the first reading of all, but, but table policy thirty-five-ten, to have clarification.
Yep.
And make that change to the other.
Make the language change on.
Yeah, clean the language up on the first, on twelve-ten.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, and clean the language up on twelve-ten.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any public comment? Okay, all those in favor, Gretchen?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye. And then, our last batch of policies, consideration of new recommended policies procedures. My only concern is, do we even need policy thirty-one fifty? Because it says it's for grades nine through twelve.
No, and I have that in my notes, it's not needed.
So, we shouldn't even have that one on the docket there?
You can just, you can eliminate it, yeah.
Okay, so we're reviewing all of the policies except for thirty-one fifty, because that one doesn't apply to K eight.
Yeah, so, and again, we've gone through them, and, and, uh, there's nothing in them that gives me pause for any of them, it's, uh, in any of them, actually. And so, if you have any questions, you know, I'd be glad to answer them.
Hey?
I would make a motion to consider, um, these recommended policies as written.
Do we want to say with the exception of thirty-one?
Except, yeah, except thirty-one fifty.
Except thirty-one fifty, that does not apply to our grade level.
I'll go ahead and second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any public comment? All right, all those in favor, Gretchen?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye. And then, consideration to, to delete policy twenty-three-twelve P copyright procedure.
Yeah, these don't come up very often where they're actually deleted, but it is a deleted policy, so it's really just a kind of a formality. But it was also included, the copyright procedure was included into another policy, basically. So, this one is just null and void, basically.
Hey?
I'll make a motion to delete policy twenty-three-twelve P.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, any public comment? Okay, all those in favor, Gretchen?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
And aye. All right, and then, our last action item, consideration of accepting resignation of our business manager.
Well, I would say denied.
Yeah, no.
Do any good anyways, and so, uh, thanks Serena for her, for her, you know, time here at West Valley. I'm gonna miss her. She did a great job and, uh, gonna be hard to replace.
Thank you. It is very, and I want you all to know, it was not made lightly. It was a very strange situation that came up out of nowhere. Um, actually, it started three years ago, but I did not know anybody was even thinking of me from three years ago. But it was the opportunity of a lifetime that I've been wanting to do for twenty-five years. And you don't get that very often. But everyone here has been wonderful and welcoming, and I really enjoyed working with everyone. And it was really hard to make that decision. But thank you very much for my time here.
Thank you. You weren't here long enough. Not happy about it.
And congratulations on your new endeavor. I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Yep, congrats.
All right, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Serena's resignation.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Okay, all those in favor? Gretchen?
I.
Marilyn?
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
And I. Okay, now on to information items. Our usual August cash, cash reconciliation, August one, one fifteen, one-eighty-two reports, September activity account, bank reconciliation. And then also the TR one, school district application for registration for school bus routes and state re, uh, reimbursement.
And I don't know if you've, uh, ever seen the estimated reimbursement before, but I just threw it out there, especially since we keep adding routes.
Yeah.
So there's, you know, there's a daily rate per mile. And so these are all of our routes, miles they are. And what our, um, reimbursement rate is, it's rated on the size of the bus. So that's why the pink bus gets just a slightly bit less because it's a seventy-some seater where the others are eighty-two or eighty-four. Um, but this eighty-six thousand dollars is the estimated reimbursement from the county and state that the district receives towards transportation to pay for the buses.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we need, um, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn meeting.
I second this. Okay. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.